I'd like to call this meeting to order. A regular meeting of the Village Board on Monday, February 3rd at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom. This meeting has been given public notice and according to sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes, in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present at this time. I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report. Just a couple things to report tonight. First, this Thursday is the Germantown Scholarship Foundation Dinner and fundraiser for the Scholarship Fund. It'll be held at the Florian. First time in a while that it's back into Germantown, but it's nice to be back there. And it starts at what time? Trustee Miller? Do you remember? Is it like 5:36?
Yeah.
And then I think dinner is like at 6:37, something like that. But always a good time.
5:30.
Always a lot of good things to bid on and always a lot of a good turnout for helping to raise funds for that scholarship fund. Second thing that I have, I'll turn over to our Village Clerk. She has an announcement to make in regards to the upcoming primary election.
Thank you. Yes, there will be an election on February 18th. It's a primary for the Justice of Supreme Court. Absentee voting is available in the Clerk's office now, Monday through Friday until February 14th. Normal business hours are 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And again, it's just for the Justice of Supreme Court. We do have information on our website as well as on my vote.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have under President's Reports. So we'll go on to announcements of forthcoming events, of public interest, committee and department reports. And we'll start with committee reports and committee chairs with Trustee Zabel.
General Government Finance will meet on the 17th in this room at 6:00 PM.
All right, Trustee Kaminski.
Public Works will meet in this room tomorrow night at 6:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Trustee Hughes.
Public Safety's next meeting will be March 2nd, 6 o'clock in this boardroom.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events, public interest, committee or department reports? There is no others. We'll go on to the next item, which is Citizen Import and Public Appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward for Citizen Import or Public Appearance at this time, all I would ask is you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. Absolutely. Come on up. And thank you for filling out the form.
My name is June Rogers and I've been a member of the Tourism Committee Commission. I was trying to figure out how long. It's somewhere between 10 and 15 years. In a reference to amending section 1.378, as it refers to the membership of the Tourism Commission, it states, "Whereas the Village Board having found, determined, that such amendment is necessary to protect the public health, safety and welfare." What did the Village Board find? How is public health, safety and welfare being put at risk by the current membership makeup of the Commission? Why has there been no communication from the Village Board to the Commission since July of last year? The last time Trustee Wing came to a monthly meeting was June of last year. He has missed the last seven meetings. If there was a problem, why wasn't it communicated to the Commission? Regarding the change in membership, shouldn't the Village encourage membership in its committees by the public? Why eliminate public members? Reading from a Wisconsin Legislative Council Information Memorandum referencing the 2015 Senate Bill 21 enacting Act 55, it reads, "Act 55 eliminated a municipality's authority to directly spend the room tax revenues that must be spent on tourism promotion or tourism development, not municipal development generally." If the proposed makeup of the Commission of five members includes two trustees and the Village Administrator, doesn't that majority give the municipality control of those funds which Act 55 sought to eliminate? It also sends the message that the public is not welcome in government. The current Commission wants the Village Board to have all the information it needs to make good decisions, and we welcome, value and consider the same from the Village. Both sides need to be heard and considered. The current Commission has long wondered why there has been no communication from the Village Board. Please, I respectfully request a no vote on amending this ordinance. And to the trustees on the General Government and Finance Committee, please change your minds. The membership makeup doesn't need to be changed. Preserve public involvement in government. There needs to be two-way communication between parties so we can all serve Germantown to the best of our abilities. President Walter, please do consider putting the Village Administrator on the Commission as the Village Representative. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to come forward for Citizen Import or Public Appearance? Thank you.
My name is Carol Mary. I'm a resident of Germantown since 2003, and I currently serve as the Chairman of the Village Tourism Commission. The Village has some challenges. This is a bedroom community and such, we may not think of Germantown as having been a tourist attraction. Yet we have many activities here that are attractive to outside visitors. We are currently a jumping off point for a lot of attractions and events. We need to capitalize on that. You will have to decide if you want to follow the directions of the state with a focus in heads in beds, or do you want to make it a giveaway program for events that could use some extra promotional funds. Some organizations in the Village have told us they don't want any more attendance. They're strung out as far as they can with volunteers. And one told us Saturday we're fine, but we could use some help on Sunday for people showing up. And you have a new facility coming at Dinesville. Is there a marketing plan in place for that program, that building, and who's doing it? Have they begun any promotion on the facility such that it has rental agreements in place the day that it opens up? Please publish this vision you have for the Tourism Commission, such that all serving on it in the future will know what it is. I've been on the Commission for four-plus years and have never yet received any direction from the Village. One final comment, I'm very disappointed in the way that this change has been handled. Only through the Village Administrator was the current Commission made aware of the changes that were proposed. Very unprofessional to not have provided the courtesy notice to the original meeting when the discussions were held. I think you're above that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishes to come forward at this time for Citizen Import or Public Appearance? Anyone else? All right, then we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is Consent Agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items A through D. Motion made and seconded for Consent Agenda approval of items A through D. Any discussion on that motion? No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Vaughn.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Hughes.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us then to New Business, and we'll start with a New Business, item A, denial of operator license for Tyler Zabyatowski.
Chairman, or President?
Trustee Hughes.
This was actually postponed at the Public Safety meeting earlier tonight to next month.
All right.
Is that a motion to postpone till the next, after the next Public Safety meeting?
It shouldn't even be on here, because we took no action on it.
But being that it's listed, do we need to take action on it? Village Attorney.
It's up to you. You could either table it, you could postpone it, or you could just not take any action and it'll just show up presumably next month after the next Public Safety meeting. Either way.
And we'll take no action. Then we'll go on to New Business, item B, Ordinance 03-2020, rezoning application from A2 Agricultural and RS3 Single Family Residential to the RS2 Single Family Residential Zoning District and Three-Lot Certified Survey Map for Nancy Belkey Deptola, agent for the Belkey Family Trust, property owner, which is located at West 140, North 10833 Country Air Drive. To give us some more information and background on this new business item, I'll turn the meeting over to our Associate Planner, Emily Zandt.
Thank you. So this is a request to reconfigure four parcels, about 35 acres, located off of Country Air Drive, into a three-lot certified survey map. They're also requesting a rezoning of a proposed lot two, which is just under four acres, from the A2 Agricultural District to the RS3 Sing- I'm sorry, A2 Agricultural District and the RS3 Single Family Residential District to the RS2 Residential District. So the subject property is located south of the Canadian National Railroad, east of Fond du Lac Avenue and west of Country Air Drive. The site zoning is currently, again, A2 and RS3. To the north is the railroad right-of-way and then industrial land use. To the south is RS3, RS4 and B1 Residential and Commercial. The property to the east of the subject property is agricultural and residential, and then to the west is agricultural. So the proposed CSM is to create, proposed Lot 1, which is highlighted in red on the screen, just over an acre, and this is planned to be sold for a future residential lot. The proposed Lot 2 will be just under four acres and will contain the existing single-family dwelling. Soil evaluations for proposed Lot 1 do indicate that the parcel is suitable for the installation of a mound, private onsite wastewater treatment system. Proposed Lot 2 will contain the single-family dwelling and accessory structures. The rezoning request is for proposed Lot 2. Proposed Lot 3 will remain zoned agricultural. The proposed CSM does show an existing 60-foot wide road reservation that extends north and east from Fond du Lac Avenue, and it's highlighted in gold on the screen. Any future development of the proposed Lot 3, however, would require additional rezoning and land division proposal, which would include a public hearing. At this time, no applications for rezoning or public, or, I'm sorry, or subdivision have been submitted. Wetlands have been identified on proposed Lot 3, and the wetland delineation has been provided on the submitted CSM. The proposed rezoning, again, for Lot 2 is consistent with the 2020 Land Use Plan MAP classification of low-density residential. Proposed Lots 1 and 3 will maintain their existing zoning. Just a couple comments from staff. The RS2 District allows up to two detached accessory structures with a maximum square footage of 1.75% of the total area of the lot. In this case, two accessory buildings are permitted with a maximum of 309 square feet in total. There are three existing accessory structures on the property currently. Based on staff's observation, there's a 24-by-24-foot garage that is dilapidated and should be removed, which would bring the accessory structure in, the accessory structures into compliance with the RS2 District requirements. The applicant may also apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance to this requirement. This has been added as a condition of approval. The Village Surveyor has identified technical corrections in a memo dated December 20th and another memo dated January 9th. These corrections have been submitted but are waiting final, waiting for final approval by the Village Surveyor. So the Plan Commission did recommend approving the rezoning of the 3.947-acre parcel from the A2 Agricultural and the RS3 Single Family Residential to the RS2 Single Family Residential District as proposed. And the Plan Commission recommended approving proposed Lot, the proposed three-lot certified survey map of the 35.29 acres located at W140 and 10833 Country Air Drive, west of Country Air Drive, with two conditions.
Okay, thank you. Board?
Move approval as presented.
Second, with the information that the PC's recommendations would be taken care of along with the survey, okay, from the Village.
Does your motion include the survey map, or is it just?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Trustee Miller.
Has the property owner already agreed to remove that structure, that dilapidated structure, to come in compliance?
We did, the Plan Commission did recommend as approval of condition. The other option for the property owner is to apply for a variance to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that requirement.
Okay.
Not at this time, no.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Not opposed, motion carries. Next item under New Business is item C, Ordinance 04-2020, rezoning application for M1 Plan Development District, PDD, Resolution 06-2020, conditions and restrictions for the M1 Plan Development District and Two-Lot Certified Survey Map for Zilber Property Group, agent for T1 Investors of Germantown II LLC, property owner located at West 210, North 12805 and West 210, North 12855 Gateway Crossing. To give us some more information and background on this new business item, I'll turn our meeting over to our Community Development Director, Jeff Retzler.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we are all aware, the Gateway Corporate Park was created concurrently with tax incremental District Number 8 back in 2018. Since that time, we have three buildings that have been constructed and completed. Lot 1, the Briggs and Stratton Facility, known as Zilber 1. Lot 3 has recently been developed with buildings Zilber 2 and Zilber 3. And at this time, the developer is seeking permission to divide Lot 3, putting the new common property line between Zilber 2 and Zilber 3. Back in 2019, when Zilber 2 and 3 were approved, one 30-plus acre lot was created, as shown on the screen, known as Lot 3. The proposal now that Zilber 2 and 3 are completed is to further divide Lot 3 into two parcels, splitting the parcel horizontally, again, with Zilber 3 on the north parts, part, and Zilber 2 on the south. The reason for the Plan Development District proposal is to create a special zoning district just for this 30-plus acre parcel in order to accommodate the way the lot was developed and to accommodate the proposed land division with the common property line running between the common truck court area that was created between the buildings. The Plan Development District, as presented in the staff report and resolution, is to adopt the M1 Limited Industrial Zoning District Regulations as applies to all of the parcels in the Gateway Corporate Park, with one exception to modify the parking lot setback requirement, effectively eliminating that, to accommodate the existing shared truck court area lying between the two buildings, as shaded in blue on the screen. The Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the proposed Plan Development District creation and also to approve the Two-Lot Certified Survey Map as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Ordinance 04-2020 and Resolution 06-2020.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Zabel.
Yeah, my only question, with the PDD, they have an asserted lot line and with no setbacks required, is it possible, or is, I'm going to, it's one of the Board's interests and maybe possibly you're trading a couple little islands in there to plant, do some tree plantings or something else that would sort of break up that pavement in the middle? I know the original intent was not to do it, but now that they are separate buildings under separate ownerships, at least I'd find assumption, that maybe it's something to do that would add a little bit to the area.
In discussions with Zilber initially, that idea was floated past them. However, in looking at the way that the truck court was designed and the amount of area available between, to accommodate trucks pulling in and out and circulating through the area, it was felt to just leave it as is and try not to retrofit some sort of landscaping in there just for the benefit of putting landscaping in there and a truck court that was designed to not have landscaping in the middle of it. There is a cross-axis easement that was created to accommodate the shared area between the two, and that was satisfactory, both staff and the Plan Commission at this point.
Very good. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Not opposed, motion carries. Next item under New Business is item D, Resolution 07-2020, contract with Parketechure for Phase 2 Design Services for Fireman's Park, multi-purpose shelter building in amount not to exceed Board?
I'd like to hear from our Park and Rec Director, Mark Schrader, on this topic. Give us a little bit more background.
Good evening, everyone. This item is fourth from the Park and Recreation Commission. As you recall, this is really the third phase, the third leg of the construction of a multi-use pavilion for Fireman's Park. 2018, we had the public engagement process that assisted us with the sighting of the building in the vicinity of the Gale Pavilion, Performing Arts Pavilion, and it really looked at what programming uses the community would want to have in this facility. So that was in 18. That led to the establishment of a budget. We divided the project into two phases. Last year was Phase 1, which was the design of the infrastructure for sewer water, electrical. That contract was awarded to a firm by the Board in August, and we are in the process of completing Phase 1. Sewer and water is in, and we'll be starting up here in spring with the finishing touches, grading, electrical, lighting, that type of thing. So we're at the point now where we would like to proceed with the building itself. Monies were approved by the Board last year to construct a pavilion, taking off from the conceptual design from 2018. And the Park and Rec Commission is ready to recommend, has recommended, a contract with Parketechure. You may have read my report a little bit, so we've been working with Ayers Associates out of Madison. Our obligations with Ayers conclude with Phase 1. But in my experience, it's twofold. One is working with the company, but I think even more importantly, I shared with the Commission that it's the project team, and as I put in there, our project team is no longer with Ayers Associates. And some of the key players have formed a new company called Parketechure. I've known Blake and his staff for a number of years, and talking to the Park and Rec Commission, we feel that their experience and skill set is spot-on when it comes to park and recreation facility planning. So that's maybe a long-winded spiel, but that brings you up-to-date to where we're at over the course of the last two-plus years.
Trustee Vaughn?
Can you bring me up to speed as to where we're at with the finances? I remember the building was costing way more than we wanted. How much money do we have left to do the building? How much more do we need to do the building?
So the final cost will be, you know, dependent upon where we go with the design. If you go back to when we did the conceptual design, we had a building cost that ranged from around $730,000 to $850,000. As you recall, the, one of the discussions was on whether we wanted to make the shelter area more of a three-season use with the garage door concept, which I know everybody seems to be in favor of. So in 2019, we had $750,000 approved under the heading of Park Shelters. And as you recall, $150,000 was set aside for the Dinesville Pavilion, and the balance was to go towards the Fireman's Park Pavilion. Phase 1 bids came in around, engineer's estimate was about $450,000. It came in, in the 415, 400, somewhere in that range. So we do have some monies that we would recommend carrying over. That was always the intent, to go towards the construction of the building. I'll call it new money in 2020 is the $450,000 that's been outlined. So $450,000, the balance of monies left over from Phase 1 infrastructure, and then we're also looking at a $200,000 transfer from the Park Impact Fee account. So I think that brings our numbers up to the $850,000 range. So that's kind of where we're at. Certainly, we hope that when design is done and we get out into the bidding world, that we hear good results, good competitive bids.
Trustee Miller?
So I, since the Park and Rec Commission meeting, I've, you know, I've just had this one question. I think, Blake, you've done a fine job, and, you know, we've had some great meetings in design and discussion and that, but this is Phase 2 now. Does it need to be bid? Is there an obligation? Do we have to have it bid? Or can we just award this contract for Phase 2?
So under the statute, I assume that was a question for me.
It is. Thank you.
Under the statute, bidding is only required for public construction. Public construction is not really defined in the statute, unfortunately, so we just have to kind of sometimes make a best guess. Where we are pretty comfortable, though, based on some of the case law that's out there, is that professional service contracts generally do not need to be bid. So your services for design work such as this probably don't need to be bid, because it's just a professional services contract. Now, if it was more of a design-build type circumstance, you know, that might change the analysis, but here we're talking just design services, and so that's really just, you know, service as opposed to construction.
Great, thank you. Well, in that case, I am going to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7, 2020, not to exceed $35,580.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Trustee Zabel.
Under the terms and conditions, they got reimbursable expenses, and they say, basically, if it's not covered by the Fitch fee, do we know if the mileage and traveling to and from is going to be a reimbursable charge over and above the $35,000 for the contract? Or is that all included, along with other billing costs that may be included?
Come on up, Blake.
Excellent question. Excellent question. Anything in terms of printing and mileage would be included in our fixed fee. The only thing that may not would be permits to the state for reviews, DSPS, and that type of thing.
Could you state your name and stuff for the audience and for our clerk?
Yes, I will. Blake Tyson with Parketechure and Planning.
Okay. So basically, then the mileage and stuff is not, would not be included, because I see you have three meetings to be occurred here, and of the three meetings, you got the kickoff meeting with design team and staff, and then you got the trust and plan review. I'm assuming that would go in front of the building committee that we would have here, and then you'd have the final design also with them in front of the board and them, I would assume.
Yes, all those expenses, excuse me, are covered in our fixed fee.
And along with that is all the documents and stuff that you would have to write out for us to go out for bids on the project.
Correct. Yeah, the only thing additional is whatever we have to submit in terms of permit, permits to the state for plan review.
Can you think of things that you would have to submit? Do you have to, building designs and stuff have to go to the state for approval?
They do, yep. It'd have to go through architectural review and plumbing review at the state.
So those would be over and above the $35,000?
Correct. That's a pass-through right from the owner to the state.
Would we do that, or would you do that?
We will file everything for you. Yep, no problem.
Okay. That's all I have. Further discussion? Trustee Bob?
The $150,000 that was set aside for Dinesville, are we still setting that aside? That money still earmarked for Dinesville, or are you guys commentating that for?
No, no. The intent, when I made the recommendation for the 2020 budget, that was including, or taking into consideration that the $150,000 was earmarked for Dinesville.
Further discussion? No further discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Bob?
Nay.
Trustee Hughes?
Nay.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Takes us to new business item E, ordinance 02-2020, an ordinance to amend sections 1.378 of the Germantown Tourism Commission. Motion to approve. Motion made and seconded. Trustee Wing?
Okay. What this is, is it's an ordinance that's calling for two trustees to sit on the tourism board, a rep from the government, from village government, which is the administrator, village administrator, then one representative from the business community, which is the chamber rep, and then by law, one representative from the hotel motel. That's what we're doing here. Now, you heard some speakers tonight say, you know, well, the government can't spend this money. We shouldn't be doing this. We shouldn't be putting government, you having two trustees and a village administrator who are taking control of the board. So let's put that to rest right now. Let's look at the communities around us. This is one of the reasons we're doing this. We have to update. We have to get with the times, or the taxpayers get hurt in many ways. So let's go over to, let's start in Mecklenburg. Mecklenburg doesn't have a tax. Let's go to Brown Deer. Brown Deer's board has two trustees on their board and a village manager, which is the equivalent to village administrator. And then they have the village trustee, or treasurer on the board, and then the hotel motel rep. So they have four people from the village on their board, two trustees and a manager, like we're doing. You go down to Menominee Falls. Menominee Falls Tourism Commission has two village trustees on the board. So what we're asking here for tonight, this is very common around the state, they have the village manager on that board. Again, we're asking for our village manager, which we call, which, we have different names for these, but they're the same thing. They're representing government. And then they have the village president on their board, and then the hotel motel rep. So they have four of the five that are from government. Now, we can go up to Richfield. Richfield doesn't have any hotels. Go to Jackson. Jackson has the village president and the village administrator and the Park and Rec Director. So they have three government officials on their board. And then let's go to West Bend, which we've modeled this law after. Again, they have two aldermen on the board. That's the equivalent of two trustees. They have the city representative, who is their administrator right now currently on that board, and then they have one member from the business community, which is what we're asking for. The chamber represents many businesses, so they're great for a business rep. And then they have the hotel motel rep, like everybody does. So to act like this is something scandalous and crazy, all our neighbors are doing it. And you can go all over the state, like Peewaqui and West Alice, and I can continue to name areas where the whole board is made up of government officials. So this is nothing out of the ordinary. And the reason that I want to do it is because after serving on the board 10 years ago and serving on there now, I see a lot of red tape. I'm a conservative. I hate red tape. When I talk to the nonprofits in our community, they're telling me, listen, we have all these hoops we got to jump through that we never had to do before. We got all this paperwork. We got volunteers. They don't have time for this. Then we have to show, we have, they have it in our receipts at a certain time. We have to do this. Then now there's an added layer. We've hired a marketing director. And I can go over what we pay her to promote Germantown as a tourism destination, but these groups have to meet with her before they even meet with the board. You can see how this government's being out of control. So the red tape and the wasteful spending, to me, this is my opinion. They have different opinions. You may have different opinions, but we had meetings where we discussed putting up billboards in Chicago and Madison, visit germantown.com. No, this is crazy. I haven't found anybody besides the people sitting on the commission that think this is a good idea. I challenge you to talk to any business owner in Germantown or any nonprofit and ask them if they want billboards in Chicago advertising Oktoberfest or MyFest or whatever. We need money. We don't need billboards in Madison or Chicago. So this is wasteful spending. I don't believe we need a marketing director. Maybe some of you on this board do, but this isn't, you know, we're not Wisconsin Dells or Fish Creek Door County. I don't think we should be spending what we are on marketing, especially when these nonprofits are telling me, we don't even go for the money anymore. There's too many hoops to jump through. Recently, the last meeting minutes, they're talking about ski packages to Germantown and advertising in Chicago. Let that sink in. Here's from their meeting minutes. It was a motion moved forward to develop a ski package with local hotels. They considered, and then after that, they're considering running ads for these ski packages in the northern Chicago suburbs. Well, having lived a year in Chicago, I can tell you I've seen a lot of ads. If I looked in a magazine and there was an ad for a ski package in Germantown, I would have freaked out. Now, I know once you get past security, the slopes on Omega Hills could be really gnarly. But what are we advertising ski packages for? I guess it's Little Swiss, and we want them to stay in our hotels, so I understand the thought process, well, if we advertise ski packages. So I get it. You want them to stay in our hotels, maybe they'll eat at a restaurant here, but why are we wasting all our time on this? But meanwhile, we have nonprofits that are begging for money, and they're not getting it. Years ago, when I was on this board, this whole thing was filled with local nonprofits that were getting money. Take a look where the money is all going now. This is last year's budget. Everything in yellow goes to our marketing director. Everything in blue goes to a local nonprofit. And then there's a few categories where there's photography and websites that are just part of the marketing. So Elaine Modle, who's the marketing director, and she's a fine woman, and I, this is, in no way am I attacking her, but I don't think we need a marketing director. She makes more money promoting Germantown for a tourism destination than our village president makes in a year. Plus, she's the director of Washington County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and she gets another eight grand for that. So if you add it up, Elaine Modle is, the checks made out to her are to $21,860 last year, and the checks to the local groups, Oktoberfest, MyFest, and Elk Moose Lodge, total 9,025. So 67% of the money went to marketing, basically directed by one lady, and 27%, 1 out of $4, went to our local groups, and I'm telling you the truth. And if you don't believe me, come and visit these groups with me. They tell me, Dan, we don't even go for the money anymore. There's too many hoops. This is getting ridiculous. All the red tape and all the rules and regulations. This is why I'm doing it. And I know for some of the people that have been on the board a long time, you feel under attack because of this, but when I went to your meetings, I felt like I was under attack. The law says you serve at the leisure of this board, yet when the board makes recommendations, you don't even want to hear them. One night, I said, hey, let's have the board tell how much you want to give to the fest hall. And they were like, you shouldn't do that. That's, you know, why should you tell us how we should run? We're an autonomous board. Well, look at these other communities. They are taking those tax dollars and they're using them to build tangible buildings. We got a lot of debt coming up. We got a police station to build. We got a public works building to build. We can use some of this money, and there's going to be more coming in because the laws are changing, to help out with some of these tangible projects, and this will help our taxpayers. So yes, am I trying to take control of the board? Yeah, but it's not me, Dan Wing, trying to take control of the board. It's the taxpayers that I represent trying to take over the board so they can get a benefit like all the other communities do.
You have a motion?
We do.
Further discussion? Trustee Zabel, this came through your committee. Anything to add in comments or what was discussed while it came up through General Government and Finance?
No, I think pretty much the discussion that you heard so far was what was done there at the end is it just went a little bit farther along and gave us a little more facts that he did not have the General Government Finance meeting.
And how did the vote go?
It was unanimous.
I think it was unanimous. I think it was a 4-0 vote.
Okay. Question? Trustee Bob?
Yeah. Brian, can you tell us about this statute, the state law that says we cannot do this?
Well, there isn't any state law that says that we can't do this. This is a perfectly acceptable method of organizing the membership of the body. I think perhaps what you are suggesting is the discussion that we heard, that, you know, there were some limitations that were placed on what we can spend the money for on, and what the statute effectively does is it earmarks certain percentages of the tourism dollars that we get for, and just going to broadly call it tourism-related purposes, things that are going to, in essence, have the possibility of driving hotel stays within the community. Prior to that statute amendment that took place back in 2015, communities could really just use the money however they want. And in most communities, it just went right into the general coffers and you used it on whatever you wanted. And so there are limitations that still exist. Those limitations don't go away by what's being proposed here. This is just a change in the makeup of the body. And so those restrictions still exist, and it's just a matter of dealing with those restrictions with different members.
Further discussion? Trustee Zabel?
Yeah. And I want to point out, when the law changed, we didn't change the membership of the board, the committee that was out there. We just changed and updated our codes to match the state law. The committee that was in place at the time was the same committee that was there before the law went into place. What we're finding out now is that when the law changed, I think a lot of people made some modifications and changes to the committees, because in the past, the same makeup was there prior to the state law change. All we did is to keep the same committee's membership in place and change our codes to match state law. So now we are basically looking at the memberships of the committees and looking at what's occurring around us and changing the membership of the committee.
Trustee Myers?
I was going to say, one of the things they also did was they had the membership would be from four to six people, but the only thing they really requested was that somebody from the hotels would be on that committee, but the other four or three, I mean, five or three, could be whatever the village wanted to have.
That's true. Trustee Bob?
Well, I'm okay with switching this around, but how do we get proper direction to the group that we do put into place? It sounds like this group has not talked to us. They talked to us once, that I recall, but they're claiming they have no direction. And we seem to have an idea of what we're looking for. Is that just the matter of the people we put on there are going to know what the board wants? Are we going to say that Steve, the village administrator, is going to bring our ideas to that board? How does that board get the information of what we want?
Trustee Wing?
Well, with any board, there's the big problem. How do you relate what you want? But in this current model, as the other communities have found out, with two trustees, you get that, plus the village administrator works for all of us. So if you have a problem in the way the direction's going, you contact the trustee or you contact the village administrator. But what other communities have found, as the state keeps putting these mandates on them, they found these models to work best. You know, West Alice many times has articles written about how they're working, how their village board works with their tourism and all these other communities. Jackson, I read some stuff about Jackson and other communities. It's just a matter of getting more elected officials on there, or government officials that are accountable to the voters. When you, we've always in the past complained about groups with unelected officials that can control taxes or the spending, like MMSD and MATC. We got the same situation here. We got a board made up of mostly people that are unelected, and if they have a problem with it, they should run for election. We need more people running for elections. And then they can come here and they can say, hey, this is what I think. But it's about accountability, and I think you get more of that when you have more elected officials on the board.
Further discussion? Trustee Warren?
I always struggle with marketing. I understand it's a necessary, no matter what business you're in, but to me, it's, there's a lot of intangibles here, lack of accountability. I don't care who's on this board and what title they have or what position they're in. If we, and I'm not sure who we are, aren't clear as far as what the expectations and the metrics are, whoever this, whatever this makeup of this new board or is going to remain the same, they're still going to be kind of wallowing in without any direction. I think if we expect a certain amount of the dollars available to us should be put into infrastructure or buildings right here in Germantown and not that much on advertising, we need to be clear about that. So I guess I don't really have a heartache with changing the makeup of this board. A lot of communities have this set up with the examples you gave for a reason, I guess. I don't know how we got to our makeup or mix of people and that, but at some point, we have to be clear as far, and give direction to this board as far as what our expectations are, and just to try to rein in on some of these billboards in Chicago and other things that we see are trivial and not achieving the goals that we're hoping for.
Trustee Myers?
You know, I agree with Dan in regard to the work that you did. Appreciate that with the makeup that they have. And I like the makeup the way they have. The only thing that I have a problem with is maybe having two trustees rather than have, excuse, having two trustees, maybe only one, because at that particular time, you would still have, if you had five members, as we're looking at, you would still have two members that would be in favor as we're looking at, you would still have two members that would be in favor of the administration. But then the other three, you would only need one additional vote out of those other three. I would like to see one of the trustees to be a public member representing the people, like we had from before. But we had too many from before. That's my only point, so.
Trustee Wing.
That's what we do. We represent the people.
Yeah.
And we're voted in, as opposed to being appointed. And that's the central theme of our democracy, is we want to have the decisions made by people we can throw out of office if we don't like what they're doing. So the accountability is having elected officials on boards, especially boards that are spending tax dollars, wherever those tax dollars come from. I don't discount Dennis's argument in regards to heavily loading a member, a five-member board with three members from one group. Because then it can tend to be somewhat heavy-handed in single direction, based off of either what they feel is needed within the village because they're working within the village. I'd rather balance it off myself. And I don't discount Dennis's recommendation of a citizen member. That becomes your, kind of your ball and play. You have two people that may have always the same direction. You have two other people that are coming from the business community, one from motel hotel and one from the chamber themselves. And now you have the citizen person that has to be, the one that has to be convinced as to what makes sense or what they should be voting on in regards to expenditures. And it's not as heavy-handed in regards to all trustees and village administrator. I understand Trustee Wing's point of representation through the elected official. But I still don't discount the, not goodwill, but how it balances off the board of five members to have that citizen representative there. It kind of puts, I don't want to put them in the middle, but it kind of becomes that tipping point one way or another. That person becomes that tipping point. And I'm not saying it's going to be pressure all on them, but it does start to balance it off where if you went three and two, you could say, well, you're always going to vote with the village because that's where you're heavy-handed. That's where the direction is mostly weighted. So it could be looked at as a negative in that regard. So I wouldn't be out of the realm of considering an amendment by somebody to change the makeup and add a citizen appointee. I don't do amendments.
Trustees Abel.
I'd put an amendment on the floor to see what happens. And the amendment would be to eliminate the village administrator and add one citizen member.
That's your motion to amend?
Right. That way you still have a five-member board. Otherwise, you go to a six-member board.
Right.
I like the odd number.
It could always be even. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Totally opposed to it.
Trustee Wing? As on record, is totally opposed.
Dave can go first.
Trustee Ball.
Your premise is that the third party, the citizen member, is not biased to either side.
Correct.
That's the assumption.
That's all it is, an assumption. They could be.
They're elected by, they're nominated by the president.
Right.
So is there, would there be a bias in that way where someone would choose someone that may think like the elected official of the board would be? Possibly. But in most cases, you're looking for people that have knowledge or input into something that's similar for the committee you're looking for. It's not always because he's my friend or he thinks like me. I'm always looking for people to have a background within that committee or have some knowledge base within whatever committee that they're recommended from by me. And it also, in my sense, and the way, the reason I'm going this way and leaning towards Dennis's recommendation and comment, is it doesn't look weighted. It doesn't look like we set this up so it's always balanced towards the board's decision or towards the village's decision. It puts that, it puts it in a fair light, I believe. Trustee Myers.
I'd like to, I don't know how this is, but I'd like to make a second amendment.
Amendment to the amendment.
Yes, I guess that would be the correct phrase, and to have one less trustee on that five-member, replaced by a citizen.
That's the board, that's the amendment we have now.
No, it isn't.
No, it isn't.
No, it isn't.
He wants administrator. I think administrator needs to be on it. That's my opinion, but whatever.
Rather than, might I suggest, rather than trying to jam everything into this one amendment, why don't we deal with the amendment that's before us and then we can make changes from there, depending on how that goes? It'll be cleaner for Madam Clerk and her.
So what, the amendment that's on, let me, now let me be clear, because now I'm confused. And it doesn't take much. So basically, isn't the amendment to remove one trustee and put in a citizen?
No, no. The amendment is to remove the administrator and put in a citizen member.
I didn't understand it that way. No, I don't agree with that. Sure you would.
Trustee Wing.
I just listed all of our neighbors who have two trustees and their administrator or manager. This is, and this is common.
Right, I misheard.
In fact, I didn't even go with the communities that are all government officials.
I thought we were replacing a trustee for a citizen.
If the object is you don't want it weighted to the village board, then you might as well keep it the way it is. The reason I'm doing this is to weight it to the village board. And people say, well, they laugh, say, oh, you're trying to take control. We represent the taxpayers. That's like saying, well, this board up here just isn't good enough, not enough citizen rep. Let's get rid of two trustees and appoint citizens. Well, no, that's why we're here. We're elected. We represent the residents. How foolish is it to just put appointments on boards that control tax dollars? Foolishness.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Just a couple of comments. This whole thing kind of blew up, what, several months ago because we had, we hired a marketing team or a marketing person. And that is what I really think was the jab in the gut here that started all this. And I get it. Some of these things, like billboards in Chicago and pretending we have a ski area anywhere, anywhere in Wisconsin, in my mind, except maybe Red Mountain, is pretty ridiculous. So I get it. But I think that is what started this entire snowball coming down the hill. And now that it's coming down the hill, I can really see that it's shaping up into something that I don't think is bad. After seeing what Dan Wing's chart here, and after hearing what he has to say, I mean, ultimately, who is responsible to the taxpayers of the village of Germantown? Who is? If all of a sudden money is, people get upset about this, who are they going to come to? They're not going to go to the committee because they're not elected. They're going to come to us and ask us, what the heck were you thinking? We gave you control by electing you to manage such things as this. Where this money will go? And you might say, hey, it's not a lot of money. I mean, what is it per year? But, you know, any given amount of money should pass through elected officials. We have no other committee like this in this village. They has control of funds. None.
Well, that's based off the state statute.
But I'm just saying, there is no other such animal like this.
No. But that's because the state decided to create.
Do taxpayers understand this? I don't know. At least everybody on this village board, for better or worse, has been vetted, one way or the other. And we can get kicked out after three years if people don't like what's going on. So I'm having kind of, like, I feel bad because I think this committee in the past has done a good job. I think hiring a marketing person has started the snowball flying down the hill. And now I think we're, none of us would have even analyzed this before. We would just let it keep going. Now we're looking at it more closely and we're scratching our heads and saying, wow, this is a weird setup. And maybe it's time to change. And I have to admit, I am falling on Dan Wing's side of change here. I think it's a very, a very good and explicit argument of what we should be doing and why we should be doing it. So I have to support it. And I didn't think I was going to. But I really believe I have to.
Further discussion on a motion to amend. Can we just have the motion read so that everybody's clear?
To eliminate the village administrator and add a citizen member instead. Is that correct?
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Back to the motion. Further discussion. Trustee Myers.
Actually, if I go by what Brian said, which I didn't make the motion or stop, was we should take the amendment separately. Are we going to be doing that or not?
You can, or you can wait until the next item, depending on the outcome of this one.
I'd like to make amendment to replace one of the trustees with a citizen from Germantown.
Motion made to amend. Do I hear a second? One more time. Do I have a second to the motion to amend? Motion fails for failure of a second. Back to the motion. Further discussion. Village Attorney.
So apparently, my head was not in the right spot when I drafted this. So I'd like to propose an amendment to Section 2 of the proposed ordinance, which deals with the term of the members. If you read what is in there, it doesn't really make total sense. It's kind of disjointed and not real clear. So what I would propose is that we amend that to read, the initial term of members appointed shall be through May 14, 2021. Thereafter, members shall be appointed for annual terms commencing May 15. Members may be reappointed. Appointments to vacant positions shall be for the remainder of the term of the position filled. That, I think, makes more sense.
Motion to what is that?
Motion made and seconded to amend. Any discussion on that motion to amend? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Back to the motion as amended. Further discussion. That's correct. There's been no amendments besides what Brian has recommended for a language change. No further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Bond?
Aye.
Trustee Hughes?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Myers?
No.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Next item is Item F, Possible Germantown Tourism Commission Appointments. I think it's clear, except for who the true trustee should be. Trustee Myers.
You will be going through all the committees and presenting this to the board in April, as in past years?
Yes, after the election, yes. And then usually, those things come forward at the, what's the name of the meeting?
The annual meeting.
Organizational meeting.
I guess, what I would say was just bring two members at that time. But that's just mine, whatever.
Well, based on, this change is before that time.
Oh, okay.
It says May 14, 2021.
Those who are appointed now would be since 2021. It would not be in April.
So this doesn't take effect until a year from now?
No, the ordinance will take effect upon publication, as all ordinances do. The initial term for folks that are appointed would be through May of next year, basically, so that we don't appoint somebody and then they have to be replaced again in a month and a half when we do the organizational meeting.
We should do it now, then, I guess.
Trustee Wing.
I recommend that we appoint two trustees on this board and one of them not be myself.
That's not a motion, though.
No, it's a recommendation.
Trustee Mill.
With two new board members coming on, shouldn't we really wait until the new board is formed to look at these appointments? Nope.
Do we have to, Brian?
No.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to. The commission just doesn't really have the power to do anything up until that point because your membership doesn't match what is otherwise called for under the code. And so if you have things that need to have action taken, once this ordinance becomes effective, which is typically, what, next Thursday or the week after?
It will be published next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
And we do have an application on file right now.
Yeah, so once it becomes effective, then you don't have members that otherwise qualify. And so you wouldn't be able to have a meeting until this body took some action.
And you will have members that were currently on the board. You'll still have the business. You'll still have the chamber member if Lynn still wants the position. You'll still have the hotel motel rep if he wants the position. And also, the administrator has come to meetings and has been paying attention to what's going on. So it's not like you're going to go in there blind.
Trustees Abel.
I would like to suggest, since Trustee Hughes was originally on this board when it originally got switched over, and his term is up in April, that maybe the suggestion would be that he gets appointed at now and once his term becomes vacant, you can always fill the spot in April. You decided not to run.
But then, and then that person that would be replacing him would take the rest of his term.
Well, you would have, you'd have to appoint the vacancy to fill that slot.
That takes care of one one.
Well, the other one, Dan Wing, is the other trustee at this time.
Oh, okay.
He is now the appointed trustee of the tourism committee.
He suggests that he is not.
Well, he can always resign from it in April.
I mean, based on that thought process, then it really should be Trustee Warren and Trustee Hughes.
Okay. There's another, there's another idea.
Is that a motion or are you just making comments?
Well, the thing is, it has to be appointed by you and approved by us. So basically, what I do, the only reason I would suggest Trustee Hughes is that he was there when the law went through and when all the changes were being made. And he understands the process and the state law that's in effect. That would be an assumption on my part, but that...
I'm sorry. Trustee Kaminsky.
Not that I'm trying to point fingers, but I think Trustee Miller would be really good on this because you're already involved with the recreation department. And I don't, to me, that kind of flows into stuff that's happening around the village. I mean, as an interim appointee anyway, until election. Just sorry, just throw your...
You keep talking about the interim election, yet in this resolution, it says that the people that would be appointed now would have their term until 2021. Is that correct?
Correct.
So in regards of Trustee Hughes,
No go.
The only reason that he would be, if that would be chosen, is my recommendation, would be that because of him not running for reelection, then somebody else could be chosen based off of the pool of either new trustees and then it could also be someone that's currently on the board. Need one more. Terry. She doesn't make the motion. I'll make the recommendation and then you make the motion to approve. But I do, without putting Trustee Miller in the hotspot, I do agree with her premise and with her argument.
Yeah, I'd be fine with being on the board. I don't look at it as this, you know, I don't know, everybody's looking at it like a bad thing. There's nothing wrong with this board. You know, the tourism commission is fine and I'll serve on it.
So my first recommendation would then be Trustee Miller.
Is that a motion to do it? I'll make the motion to accept your appointment of Trustee Miller to the tourism board.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. My second one would be based on Trustee Zabel's recommendation to allow possible new trustees to be, as part of that recommendation. And I'm sorry, Trustee Hughes, my recommendation would be for Trustee Hughes.
I'll just, he looks like he was getting ready to say something. I didn't want...
He'll vote against himself.
I'll make the motion that we accept the president's recommendation of Trustee Hughes to fill the slot.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. That should take care of all things under item. President Walter? Yes, Trustee Hughes.
So just one thing to finish up on. The people that were previously on the commission, who were up here and speaking, are citizens who had absolutely the best intention and gave of their time.
Many years.
They weren't giving, they weren't getting paid for this. They were doing it because they were good citizens. So that just needs to be recognized.
And it is recognized. And the purpose of it is not for punishment or because anyone was doing a bad job. It's just for change in the ordinance based on where the responsibility of those tax dollars are going to be placed. And I do agree with Trustee Hughes that the people that were on that board always had the best interests of the village and followed the letter of the statute very closely and made sure it was done correctly. It was important to them that it was done correctly, and for that, I appreciate it.
Just before we leave, is it the intention of this body that the other named individuals would just carry over so the chamber rep would stay and the hotel rep would stay unless they otherwise indicated desire not to serve?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else in regards to Item F? Thank you, Trustee Hughes, for bringing that up. Nothing else? Then we'll go on to Item G, 2020 Capital Projects Equipment Requests Borrowing.
Motion to approve.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Second. Discussion. We do have the Finance Director Rath in the audience. Anything that you'd like to add or bring up in regards to this topic? Director Rath? Anything to say?
No, no.
Okay, Trustee Zabel.
Yeah.
For discussion.
I forgot to bring up a general government that the, under the DBW administration engineering, they got designed for the Public Works Campus at $900,000. I have a problem with designing the campus at $900,000. That sounds like an awful lot of money to do design work.
Is it all, it's not all for design work, then?
But that, I don't know. That's, I guess that's a question for Larry or somebody else. I was going to ask it in general government, but we got into discussions on highways and I forgot about this.
Kim bowed out.
She's still giving me a question. She kind of talked.
She's going to the person who made it.
Well, I have to admit, you put me on the spot. I'm not sure the exact dollar. I know the design is a percentage of the estimated overall cost of the facility. So that would vary as to the size of the facility that we actually arrange and get to. So Trustee Vaughn was making a face at me. He does this for a living. But what I recall, that the construction management side of it and the design of it was all a percentage of what was being built. It's an estimate of time to design the facility, and I believe they do it off the cost.
Trustee Vaughn?
So just for clarification, we're talking about the design cost to design the new Public Works Building, which had an estimated cost-
30 million.
Of what?
23 million.
Well, that got increased to 33 million.
That's worth 23.
So, and then it got down to 12 million. So at 12 million, you're almost, what's the percentage of that? Hold on a second. $900,000?
So while you have me at a disadvantage, I'm not sure what that $900,000 was based on. I'm not-
Yeah.
I'm not sure what it was based on.
At 12 million, it's a 7.5% contract. That's excessive in today's market.
So I'm saying that might be based on what, if that was what brought was forward to, the elders for looking at the possible funding ability that may have been based on a $23.5 million facility. That was brought forward for elders to look at financing.
And that would be a 3.9% contract cost.
I think that's-
And if I'm just doing a large building, like a-
Garage?
Garage like this.
Multiple-
Two and a half is a high number for, because you're just doing one wall panel and a door panel, and you're putting a structure on top of it.
But this is for the whole site? This would be stormwater management, ponds, everything else. It's all going to be civil engineering plus the design of the building. It's for the whole site, not just the building.
Seems excessive to me.
Trustee Kaminski.
I have no idea if it's excessive or not. I wish our village manager was here because I know we could answer this. And I'm sure you agree, Larry, when we looked at a whole variety of ways to go about doing this, that number didn't come out of the air, I'm presuming. But I also, do we have to nail all these down tonight? Is this the night for all capital budget items? Because this has to be in there, one way or the other, at some amount of money. And if we don't put it in there at the correct amount, we're not going to have this building. We're not going to start it, so.
Yeah, that's-
We've got to get this right.
The number that elders is going to be creating their bid documents for-
Yes.
Correct.
I'm thinking where the cost had come from when they had first put those bid documents together through elders, that there was like a nine to $10 million structure and 10% of that they assumed would be somewhat of the design. And also, what was not used for design, if you're going forward, is going to then use for the structure. So it's not, if we're over on the design, that's money less that we're going to use for the actual campus construction. So if you wanted to have it, narrow it down and make it smaller, you're just going to be borrowing again the next year to make up for the difference.
New number.
Big cut in half. I mean, opposed, standing?
I think the last time, the last time we talked about this was at DGF and we were all questioning what the cost of this building is supposed to be. Because we had numbers ranging from $9 million up to $39 million. And I was struggling with, what are we approving? Because we don't know what we're building yet. And we were going to go somewhere, we were going to do something and, but now I'm looking at numbers in front of me that I can borrow.
The reason the numbers varied was when the first initial study was done and the architect came and did this survey and talked to all the superintendents and did the vehicle count and asked them for-
The wish list.
What do you want, the wish list?
The dream list.
That was a $23 million facility where we're putting trailers inside of a building, that trailers that haul a piece of equipment around don't need to be inside of a building. They came to us and said, well, that's too much. And we looked at the site and so we brought it down to around 15, 4.5 million and cut a lot of things out, and that was still too high. And then to get it down to the nine and a half, 10 million, it was a matter of reusing the existing facility that we have there for offices, remodeling the offices. The existing garages for maintenance would be used for more for their machine shop and oil storage, things like that. And a new, you know, maintenance garage would be tagged onto that and then a garage off of the maintenance garage. And that's how we got down, that's why you have all these different variations because we're trying to get down to something that was doable by the amount of money an administrator said we would have to do that was brought originally to the board.
So then we-
So then at the 10 million, we're at a facility that only houses what we currently have. It has no room for growth. So Public Works Committee Chairman Kaminski said, what would it take to get, so we have some growth? And we shot out a number, probably 14 and a half, 15 million would probably get us where we would need to be. And that's where we pulled back and we're looking at that. So we've met with the architect again last week, Friday morning, saying, what if we would massage the site somehow? Acquire land to the east of the site or the ball of diamonds to the south? Just in theory, what would happen if we would do that? Well, now you get into more rectangular site instead of triangular site. And from what we're hearing, the whole cost will vary again because you can change the whole shape of the building depending which way it goes now. So that's why the numbers are varying so much.
And the other numbers-
And the reason that the administrator went to elders with the 23 and a half million was just to see what would happen financially, that'd be the worst case scenario. What would the debt be to the village and the debt payment to it?
That's when we had the discussion, is when elders was here. That was our last meeting.
Talking about 50% of our reserve.
Then they added, they added cost for sewer and water to get to the building sites.
Right.
And like Kim said, anything that wasn't used in the design of that estimate, the architect would put, you know, that would, that budget amount would go, left or would go towards the construction of the facility.
Could be carried. That probably wouldn't be used this year towards any building. Right. But then we're also carrying that debt for two or three years. I mean, we're above $4 million, which I'm a little uncomfortable with. I mean, I get uncomfortable once we get past three. But that's me. I'm only one of nine.
Yeah, I just think it's a lot of money for design, but I-
I, what I don't like to do, and I think it starts to send a bad message or show some lack of control, is to borrow the money this year for possible use two years from now. I'd rather put the number more in reality for what its use is going to be this year and if it needs further funding in the future years, then put it in that. I'm not for carrying that debt for two years for possible use. I know we can use it in three years and everything is, is possible. But I'm not comfortable with it. I don't like it.
The other thing that came out of DGF was that the administrator was to get us some numbers coming out of different communities as to what they're paying for ambulances and what's occurring in different places. Because we did receive a letter that our ambulance were high, even though I see that we have a bid at Public Safety tonight of 270 some thousand, I think it was. But that and the other thing that came up in general government, that was the payment. They got 1.5 million. We're carrying over 300, 400,000 from the general fund and we're carrying over some other stuff. And I was wondering, depending on, they were sort of getting us some numbers as it relates to what projects we had listed for next year and the dollar amount and using what we were carrying over our general fund and what we were carrying over from the construction capital project fund to see if that 1.5 number would be eligible or if we want to reduce it. And I'll re-echo that earlier question. When does elders need this to go out? When do they need a final number by so that we're ready to go out for bonding? Does it have to be this meeting or can it be next meeting and?
It's whenever we want to go out for the bonding. Obviously, the quicker you get the decision of how to go forward, we give the information to them and they can get their information through and to get out the bids. But if no one's comfortable with the numbers and you want tighter numbers, two weeks later, making a decision is not going to hurt anything.
What was the timeframe on this building?
It's not this year. It's in a couple of years. I mean, you're looking at planning, you've got to acquire some possible land. You've got to look at costs of bringing sewer and water up to it. So it's probably at least a two-year timeframe. Right. And then we've also had discussions of if we're going to build for the future, do we have to pay for that future now or can we plan for the future? Meaning, let's replace what's bad, which is mostly the whole, the whole building, and then look at expanding it later in 10 or 12 years. But have that expansion there and the possibility for expansion, including the land that's around it. Trustee Kaminski.
Which is all part of the design process, to design it that way, to easily modularly be put together. But my point is, I'm going to make a motion to postpone. There are way too many questions about way too many capital items that I don't feel comfortable voting on this. Motion to postpone until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to postpone. Any discussion on that motion?
I'll discuss myself.
Discuss. Go ahead.
We really need to get with village manager and narrow down, particularly, in my opinion, the Public Works Building. But also, we need to get more background on the ambulance, which I personally don't support at this time at all. But we need to, also, the roads. What did we save? What's being carried over? And how does that affect this borrowing budget for next year? Those three things specifically, plus anything else anybody wants to add.
No, I think that, those are your big tickets. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Larry. Next item is Item H, Resolution 082020, An Initial Resolution for the Discontinuance of a Portion of the 66-Foot Public Road Dedication Shown on Certified Survey Map Number 455, Located North of County Line Road, Approximately 640 Feet East of Fond du Lac Avenue. Village Attorney.
So this evening before you is, on your, on the dais, is a revised version of the resolution. Apologize for kind of the snafu here. This item was actually added to the agenda after I looked at it and approved it last week. And upon reviewing the materials Friday after the agenda came out, I realized that it just needed to be amended to better reflect what the statute talks about in the process that we follow with the statute. And so the substance is basically the same in terms of what we're looking to accomplish. The form, however, is slightly different than what was in your packet. And so we would look with your blessing for a motion to approve the resolution as presented this evening instead of the one in the packet.
I will make that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Zabel.
Does anybody know why this right of way was ever granted? Was it meant to get to a bad property someplace or?
I don't know. Bob Balthius.
We had, I had Bob Balthus research that and he really couldn't come up with any reason why this was placed on a CSM years ago. If you look to the north of it, there's just nothing for it to ever connect. There's nothing that's aligned with it northerly of this parcel.
Yeah, it's in the middle of nowhere.
Take it.
Tax reasons.
Police management now has more land to be taxed on.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to last item under New Business. Item I, Germantown Business Development Loan Pool Application for Brahm's Pizzeria LLC. Village Board May Enter-
Well, he used to run-
Into closed session per Wisconsin Statute 19.85 subsection 1, subparagraph E, "For deliberating or negotiating the acquisition of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session and may re-enter into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate."
I make the motion to go into closed session.
My question is, do we need to go in closed session?
No.
Because we didn't do that in the economic committee, per se.
Okay, well, the motion is to go into closed session, unless you want to change your motion.
Second you, nobody can second it. That'll change my motion.
Trustee Miller seconds. No, you don't?
There's no second.
There's no second so far. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Need another motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Again, this was that economic development and again, there's no, my memory is that there's no cost to the village at all. It's just a matter of giving them the right to go to the bank in this area to apply for funds.
Right. This is a loan pool that was developed through that commission that is specifically for small business in our commercial corridor of McQuinn Road. And it is designated as to what those perimeters of that corridor are and how businesses can use these funds. But they are then underwritten by the bank. They go to the bank for the loan and the loan is approved and handled through the bank. But it is through the village that it is appropriated and approved for that purpose for economic development in that area.
And again, the only other question is, where is this Pizzeria going to be? It's going to be, is it going to be not Schultz's or is it Schultz's?
That I don't know.
It is Schultz's?
It's replacing that space.
Where's your dad going to hang out?
Got a new spot.
Trustee Myers.
I was going to say, I agree with Dan. One of the questions I brought up was in regard to having the rental agreement for five years or something. And when Jeff brought that up, it didn't make any sense. I did check with Bank 59, as it's now called, per se, the manager there. And she had said that she just gets the application from Steve and then they take it to the underwriting department and then they're the ones that make the final decision, so.
That's correct. And handle the responsibility and the risk.
Why are we involved in this?
Because it's our loan pool and it's something that they offered for our business community. And we have approval.
Their money.
Yeah, what they, what they look for, because they do this with all the communities where they have a branch, assuming that the community is otherwise acceptable to it. They look to have the community weigh in such that it is a business, well, more importantly, I guess, in a location. I guess, in a location that the community wants to see businesses helped with funds through the bank. And so they ask for our approval because it then is kind of our blessing to say, yes,